Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 1st, 2022 Mount Vernon City School District School Board Meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Sorensen.
Present.
Trustee Redd.
Present.
Trustee Turnquist.
Present.
Trustee Patterson.
Present.
Trustee White.
Present.
Trustee McOwen.
Trustee Miller.
Present.
Trustee Mitchell.
Present.
Trustee Saunders.
Present.
The quorum is present.
Do we have any communications from the public?
There are no communications from the public.
All right. Dr. Hamilton, do you have a report?
I do have a report, Madam President. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to begin by just giving a brief statement relative to today being the first day of our Black History Month. Black History Month is an entire month devoted to putting a spotlight on African-Americans who have made contributions to our country. Originally, it was a way of teaching students and young people about the contributions of Black and African-Americans in school as they had and still have been often forgotten or left out of the narrative of the growth of America. Now, it is seen as a celebration of those who's impacted not just the country but the world with their activism, achievements, and inventions. Black History is a time for rejoicing, celebrating, and thanking those African-Americans for giving us so much hope and for a life lesson that we could use to help move our students into greater knowledge and understanding about their heritage. Black History isn't just about all the bad times we've been through. It's about integrity, leadership, and determination. It's about showing our true character, rich with history. Black History Month was created to focus attention on the contributions of African-Americans in the United States. It honors all Black people from all periods of U.S. history, from the enslaved people who were first brought over from Africa in the early 17th century to African-Americans living in the United States today. Learning about other cultures helps us to understand how much we are really alike and to remove barriers and begin to authentically connect with one another. So as our teachers and principals embrace this opportunity to really develop lessons and experiences for our students around Black History, they are encouraged to use curriculum and ideas that are atypical, not your just Malcolm X and Martin Luther King, but African-Americans who have had tremendous contributions to our country, inventors who are often unsung, and to learn about those Americans, African-Americans, who are often forgotten and who have not received the traditional limelight they would get. So this month in particular, our goal is to uncover the hidden treasures in our history and to make our students help find their place in space in the world and the heritage from which they come. So that is my opening comment as we launch our Black History Month this month. Additionally, I'd like to make a comment for your information relative to social-emotional learning. I've been doing a lot of reading on COVID and how COVID has impacted students and adults. It is a phenomenon that is currently under research, and the research is actually quite engaging. I would encourage you in your leisure to take the time to read some of the most recent research by sociologists, psychologists, psychiatrists about the impact of COVID. So the COVID-19 school closures have underlined the importance of human connections when there are no in-person options for our students. Since the spring of 2020, temporary school closures in over 160 countries have kept 1.6 billion students out of school. Their stressors associated with the pandemic and the lack of access to school, for example, loss of routines, social isolation, economic hardships, lack of technology, and in some communities, not ours, no access to regular food on a daily basis. Healthy social-emotional development is particularly important because it impacts the whole child. And as you know, we have been working very carefully to ensure that our curriculum embraces the whole child, not just their literacy and numeration skills. Students with good social-emotional skills have better academic performance and school behaviors. Fewer behavior problems, of course, add to better relationships with peers and families, and fewer mental health issues that often manifest itself in atypical behavior and, if not addressed, becomes an issue as our students enter adolescence and young adulthood. Students who have healthy relationships do better, and those who have difficulty navigating the social development shifts of school are more likely to experience academic underachievement, behavior problems, and emotional difficulties. New research has confirmed that if social-emotional challenges go unaddressed and peer problems become more chronic and severe, the likelihood of serious negative outcomes in adolescence, including academic failure and drop out, significantly increases. To get ahead of this and to be proactive, I have directed the Office of School Improvement and Curriculum Instruction to work in tandem on expanding our SEL curriculum, Social-Emotional Learning Curriculum, using an integrated model across all content areas, and for teachers to include a daily period of time devoted exclusively to SEL. So this evening, you are being asked to approve a tab that will authorize the hiring of additional clinicians and specialists to support the needs for our typical learners, and you will see a detailed abstract to accompany this tab. The intent behind this tab, and hopefully you had an opportunity to review it over the weekend, is to provide support to students who may not necessarily have an IEP, but students who are in our general ed population who need these supports. And because of the workload that our clinicians have for those students who are different learners, their workload is quite significant. So I ask that you give this tab every possible consideration. The Parent Resource Center that we have been talking about now for a little over a year, spearheaded by Trustee Miller and the Office of School Improvement, is in its final preparation stages. We have received the furniture, the computers are set up, and we are currently ordering the final supplies to put the finishing touches in place. We have conducted a round of interviews for the Parent Resource Center Coordinator and will continue until we find the perfect candidate for this position. We are currently targeting March 7th of this year for a soft opening and a ribbon cutting in the month of April. I'm extremely proud of this Parent Resource Center. It is a place that I believe will help us bridge the gap between school and home, and it is a testament to our parent liaisons to have this place where these resources will be available to aid them in their work and to make connections with our parent community. I'm also pleased to announce that there will be a COVID-19 pop-up clinic on February 7th at Lincoln School from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. This pop-up clinic will provide 75 doses of the Pfizer vaccine to our students that are five years older and up, and 75 Pfizer booster doses to students 12 and up, as well as adults. The links to register and secure your reservation are on the main page on the website, and you can reach out to Mrs. Lawanda Anderson in the Office of School Improvement @LAnderson #1@mtvernancsds.org, or of course, you may call the office directly at 914-665-5227, and Mr. Thompson will ensure that this number and contact information is on the screen when our meeting airs. If you have any additional questions, please reach out to Ms. Anderson directly. And a parent or legal guardian must be present with students that are in the 5 to 15 age range. Dr. Gorman will be providing me with a list of schools who have had the highest rate of return for consent forms. I have made a commitment in an effort to entice our return of these consent forms so that we could be effective in our vaccination efforts, and we will be announcing who the winner of that $2,500 incentive will be at our next meeting. And lastly, today, we wish our Asian-Americans and Pacific Islander communities and all those in the Mount Vernon City District who identify a Happy New Year. This lunar year ushers in the Year of the Tiger, which is an animal that represents a creator of power, courage, confidence, leadership, and strength. These are characteristics that we all can use to assist us with navigating the very many challenges that we face as a school community. As we join our friends in celebrating the lunar year, it is vitally important to remember that our cultural differences are fundamental to our collective strengths and our similarities. This provides another opportunity to engage our friends, our families, and our neighbors in conversations about tolerance and acceptance. So I hope, as we celebrate this new year and as we look at Black History Month, we will embrace these opportunities as learning opportunities, not just for our children, but many of our adults could benefit from these lessons as well. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
I have a question.
Thank you, Dr. Hamilton. You have a question?
Yeah. Dr. Hamilton, as we embark on Black History Month, I want to ask the question, how many of our schools do you know of? First of all, I don't believe it's mandatory that the teachers are doing presentations and projects for Black History Month. I know in a lot of schools it happens, but my question is, does it have to come from the principal's directive, or is it a voluntary thing? And if it's voluntary, why is it only voluntary? Why is it not mandatory?
It is in our curriculum, so therefore it is not discretionary. Teachers all should be doing this. In your weekly, I believe you have a list of all the planned activities at all of our schools. It does not capture every classroom, obviously, but it does capture every school. So if you have not had a chance to do that, please, please do.
Okay, because I hear from parents that have asked me for some years now about certain schools in the district that don't seem to do anything for Black History Month, or it's something that's thrown together to the last minute. And again, on Black History Month, I just wanted to say that even though we can't get the books to educate our children on how much African-Americans have played a part in our entire world, the lean towards instilling a Black History educational part of the school year all year round, you know, how do we work toward that? And I asked this question more than a year ago, and I said, how do we work towards having Black History? It should not just be a month, of course. It should be Black History education, and how do we do that? It's not going to come from the state. It has to be something that we'd say, hey, this is something we're going to do, we're going to build this into our curriculum. Can we work towards that?
Can I answer that?
Yes, please. I was going to defer to you. I know you've been doing a lot of work.
So I met with the Education Room Committee. Can I go? Are you finished?
Yes, ma'am.
So I met with, hello, everyone. Happy Black History Month. You know I'm Black Power all the way. So what?
Are you going to do your committee report, too? You might as well.
Yeah. I got it. So the Education Committee, we met. Thank you very much, Dr. Bennett Conroy and Dr. Jeff. So in regards, so let's just talk about Black History right now. And so Hoot and Mifflin have done something really spectacular where they have paired United States history with Black history, and that's a segregated thing, but what they did was they marriage both together. So when there's a certain time and a certain part of history that's taking place in the textbooks, Black history has been infused in that currently. And so that's to avoid the question being asked, which is, well, where was Black people at during this time, right? And so it's where U.S. history and African-American or Black history has been infused together, and that's Hoot and Mifflin, which we are using here in the district for Mount Vernon City School District. In the same breath, there's an organization that's called the Gildan Lerman Organization. I'm a part of the Historians of New York City in particular, and they have what you call a traveling museum. And in this time of COVID where individuals can, we cannot get our children to a museum, you can bring the museum to the schools. So what Dr. Bennett Conroy and Dr. Jeff, what they're doing right now is they're looking at which schools are willing to take these museums that come in, it comes in already packaged, you set them up. They have one particularly just about Frederick Douglass, where children can go and they learn about Frederick Douglass, and either you set it up in your library, or you set it up in the cafeteria, it depends on, or you set it up in the hallway. It's really huge panels, very, very much interactive. They talk about, it depends on what topic that you want to hit. They have the immigrant topics. I forgot what other topics. They have Frederick Douglass, the Civil War. If I'm not mistaken, they talked about George Washington in particular. Now, it does cost money, but it's not, you know, when it comes to education, money doesn't mean a thing, right? Whoever handles the money up in here. Anyway, so in regards to that, so then I'll just go right into the visits that I made to two libraries today. So just like, you know, individuals know that I talk about reading. I am about reading, and I know that reading is a way to take you to the top. So I had the pleasure, I had the pleasure of going to Grimes, and I went to Grimes and I went to Rebecca Turner. So first of all, I just want everyone to know that the way that the students were embracing these two Black men who are principals, which is actually an extinct thing, there are a lack of Black men in particular in our educational fields, just for individuals to know that. But the way that they were embraced when I walked in there today wasn't anything that you can't buy it, you can't mimic it, it is genuine. And so when I walked up in Grimes and we went to the library together, on our way in, we were talking about Oturo Schaumburg. So Oturo Schaumburg is a dark-skinned Puerto Rican man, and his library is downtown in Harlem. And so the principal at Grimes is very much in tune to our children being exposed to books that are mirrors and sliding glass doors. And mirrors are when children can see themselves, sliding glass doors is when children feel as though that they could be who they're reading about. And so in particular, this principal, I'm going to pass around this book, he ordered this, and this is from Chike Akura. And what's embedded in there is inspecifically and particularly and intentionally individuals who have made dents in Black history, and I don't want to just say, and not just Malcolm X, but individuals who had to stand on Malcolm X's shoulders in order to get to that position. So we have elementary school children who are looking and reading books that are mirrors right now. The Brother Cornelius, I just want to give you a shout out if you're listening, Brother Cornelius, I really enjoyed my talk and my visit with him today. He spoke about culturally responsive books. We walked through his library, well, the school library, and I just want y'all to know that that library, I was so excited. I was excited about the collection that they have in there. They have graphic novels, which are my favorites. You saw books that students can relate to, and he is infusing a different kind of consciousness in that school. In addition to that, they are going to have a Jackie Robinson play. They are working on that. And we also got into like a conversation about Ezra Jack Keats. I don't know if you know about Ezra Jack Keats. Y'all need to write it down. Ezra Jack Keats is, he wrote the book A Snowy Day, and it's had a Black character in it. So we're talking about Blackness, we're talking about Black Power, okay? We're talking about the understanding of it. And then I went and hung out with Principal Doggett, and Principal Doggett, the way that those children just kept coming up to him, regardless of who was standing next to him and greeting him, was very moving to me because, see, my first teacher, my first teacher was a Black man, and I've never had a Black man be a principal when I was a little girl, right? And so Doggett, shout out to Doggett, where children are seeing themselves. He is a mirror. He is a sliding glass door. And so what they were working on was they were working on a pilot exam, the fourth graders were doing a pilot exam in the library at the time. And one of the things that Doggett said is a difficult thing, and which individuals should know, is that there is a shortage of librarians. And so we've been trying to look for librarians, he's been trying to look for librarians, and so what I'm going to do is I'm going to reach out to Long Island University, because that's where I attend, so I could become a librarian, right? It's never too late. I should be graduating in a couple of months. And so there was a shortage of Black librarians in particular, and so Doggett and I had that conversation. Shout out to everyone that's getting ready to have a really good time tomorrow with Read Aloud Day, because tomorrow is National Read Aloud Day. One more time, tomorrow is National Read Aloud Day. And if you haven't done so yet, because I'm going to get ready to come to a close to our, the Chinese New Year, there are a plethora, see, that's another thing with the mirrors and the sliding glass doors. So Chinese children have also experienced the same thing that Black children have experienced in regards to not seeing themselves in books. They haven't seen the mirrors, they haven't been a part of the sliding glass doors, but there's a book that I need you to write down, and if you get a chance, you could purchase it, an ebook. It's called Eyes That Kiss on the Corners. And so it's like how the eyes are slanted, but it's a read-aloud book for children. And the little girls in the classroom, they loved it yesterday, you know? And so one more time, I just want to thank the principal at Grimes and the principal at Rebecca Turner to making sure that they are conscientious about what's going on and what's going to take place, and how whatever they're doing right now is going to benefit the children five and 10 and 15 years from now.
Thank you, Trustee Turnquist Jones. So we're going to continue with committee reports, but I have a question for Dr. Hamilton. On your superintendent's report, you mentioned that there was going to be a $2,500 for one of the class, was it, is that one of the classes or the whole school?
The school with the largest percentage of consent forms returned.
Oh, okay. All right. So we want to continue with committee reports, so I want to start over here with Trustee Patterson. Do your committee report, standing up?
Oh, okay.
Since you were wondering if you should stand up or not, let's stand up, so we can all see you.
Thanks.
You need a pointer?
I need a mic.
Well, I'm short, so I think I can.
I think there's one down there. Trustee Patterson, do you want the mic down there? Okay. Don't drop it now.
Hello? I really feel. Sure, I offered. Okay. So there it is. Where's this book? Thank you. I have a water for this one. Hello? Hello? Okay. So Budget Committee met actually two, three times over the last few days. There were a number of issues that came up. One of the first issues we wanted to address was, there was a report that came out from the New York State Comptroller's Office that's addressing the, and it's called the Fiscal Stress Monitoring System. If we could go to the, thank you. So this is a system created by New York State. It provides an early warning of fiscal stress to local governments and school districts by examining two different sets of data. One is financial information, and one is the external environment, and this is managed by the Office of the Comptroller. So if we could go, we wanted to address both different data sets. So the first set is the financial indicators. Now, when you look at our financial indicators as a district, for year-end fund balance, and this is what's given by the comptroller as their rubric, year-end fund balance, our year-end fund balance, because this is, I would remind everyone, this is last year's data, not this year's data, last year, so the year ending 2021. The unassigned fund balance at the end of the year was $9.3 million. Maximum we can legally have is just over 10, which means had we had any more, we actually would have been written up for not being in compliance with New York State law. At the end of 2020, for example, it was a negative $2 million because of missing state aid and missing local taxes. So just for the record, last year, we were not considered in fiscal stress, it's only this year. Operating deficits and surpluses, we had no operating deficit. Our budget was actually underspent, so this, in addition, is not applicable to us. Cash position, we had a healthy cash position with sufficient cash flow to cover all of our expenses through June of 2021, despite the city owing approximately $11 million in back taxes. Use of short-term debt for cash flow, we had no, we have not had any short-term borrowing in the last eight years. And the last item, which is fixed costs, is only evaluated for local governments, so it's not even applicable to us. So these are the, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, five items that are within the district's sole control in terms of this fiscal stress standard. So if we can go to the next slide. Environmental indicators. So this is the second set of data points that they look at. When we're looking at property values, the district is not in the position to assess properties. Instead, that's the assessor's office in the city, and if I understand correctly, that has not actually not, no properties have been reassessed for a number of years. That is an issue that does come up, if everyone remembers, with the budget presentation I did last year, in terms of how that affects our budget and how that affects, you end up paying more taxes as things get assessed lower. Enrollment, absolutely. Enrollment numbers have been trending down. That is, in general, a state trend. It seems to be much more in the lower half of the state, but some of that is people are keeping their kids, they're homeschooling because they don't want to expose them to COVID, some is they're sending them out of state or out of the country where they have more robust childcare. So if you look at, I have the data for 2019, 2020, and 2021. So the drop 2019 to 2020 is 7,728 students enrolled to 7,249 students enrolled. So you'll see that's, what, almost a 500 student drop. Meanwhile, from 2020 to 2021, the drop was 209 students. So again, something where if you thought we were going to be in this financial stress category, I would have anticipated this in the 2020 school year, not the one ending in 2021. The other one they look at is the budget vote trends. I'm sorry, one more fact. Yeah, thank you. You'll look, 2020 was obviously a huge year for the vote. That was the year that it was entirely all mail-in ballots, if everyone remembers. So if you look at 2019 and 2021, tie it to compare, it's effectively probably the same, 344 people voted no, actually. But if you look at it, it's essentially the same exact amount of people voting. So again, when you look at the effect that that should have on some kind of rubric on our standard, I don't see it clicking at all. So next slide. Graduation rates, if you'll notice, again, not great that they went from 70 to 68, but they went from 70 to 68 from 19 to 20, 20 to 21 has been stagnant. And then the last indicator is free or reduced price lunch participation, and 1% of our students qualify because the district as a whole qualifies. So when you look at, when you look at the items that we're judged by, the biggest items that we're judged by that seem to be in a, some kind of negative freefall at all. And 1% of our students qualify because the district as a whole qualifies. So when you look at, when you look at the items that we're, um, judged by, the biggest items that we're judged by that seem to be in a, some kind of negative freefall at all, are the things that are outside the district's control. These are things that when they look at, and that's why they call it environmental, right? They look at the environment outside of the district to say, hey, listen, if you guys are losing enrollment, that's an issue. That's something that you need to be looking at. I believe the standard was 25 to get on the list and we were 28.3. Um, so again, it's not by a lot, but I think that when everybody is looking at this, you have to keep in mind that majority of the negative reporting is all things that's outside of our control. When you look at financial, this financial health and strength of the district, you're going to find that we're in a better financial position than we've been in for a number of years. I, I didn't agree to take questions, but fine. Did you talk to my agent?
All right, no, that's good. I really just, really just have one.
Are you done presenting yet?
Are you, are you done?
The, the, well, I'm done with presentation one.
I'm just gonna ask one, really one question.
Sure.
Can you confirm your data source for all of the metrics that you just showed us tonight?
Which one would you like?
Well, I mean.
I trilled the dark web for all of this information.
Good, good. Now, I just, because I, I just want to make, make sure that we could, we could communicate that the data that you presented today came from a reliable source that everybody really does have access to.
Absolutely. So financial indicators, if you guys look at the, um, our audit, all of the financial indicators are there. Everything that you need to know is there. Um, if you look at the environmental indicators, um, I will be honest, I did not ask the assessor's office the last time they assessed. I just know that it's been a number of years. So that conjecture, but the rest of it is information that I got from the district directly.
I have a question regarding the, um, property values. How is that, how is that on the school district's report? If it's an external, if it's, if it's an external issue, why is the property values on the school district's report?
I think you should write a strongly worded letter to the New York State Comptroller's Office. Um, but effectively what they're saying is that they're trying to look at the, the city as a whole.
Okay.
They're trying to look at the community as a whole. And it just so happens, I wouldn't be surprised, honestly, if there was some rubric and because they did not get to finish, if I remember correctly, this was the year that they didn't finish their audit, the comptroller, of the city. So I wouldn't be surprised if somehow they're missing data from the city's audit and therefore that negatively affected us.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have a question. I just have a, a request. Do you mind putting that in, like giving a quick recap of what you just said, but in very non, like economist language? You know, the way people there not, you know, they don't know the lingo could understand what you're.
The fundamental, I think the fundamental answer is everything that is within the district's control at this very moment is strong. And the financials are strong. And we're not in a position of, I mean, we were shorted at some point $16 million last year in owed taxes and we didn't have to borrow. We had the cash on hand. We are financially stronger than I've ever seen us in the four years I've been on the board. When you look at the items that they're looking at, and again, I think it's slightly misleading, which is why I wanted, and the Budget Committee wanted to present on it, it's misleading to say that the district is in financial stress. It's not the district. It's, if you want to say the city as a whole. And the fact is they use the district as the entryway to say, hey, listen, these are the things that we looked at and this is what we're considering to be an issue. But everything that, everything that was in some way, um, negative or derogatory or anything that this, that I think, where I saw, oh, my gosh, look, like our, in, in, you know, our enrollment dropped. Absolutely. But that's why I think you saw, I think there were 30, 28 different school districts or something that all had the same, a similar issue. And many of them, again, around that 25 to 30 range, where I'm saying I think that that was probably what affected them when you started looking at these external sources, where if you look at the district only, the district itself is financially healthy.
So my other question is, um, about the taxes, old taxes. Is this coming from the city or this, are our citizens that have not paid the taxes to us when we go collect it?
The year that I'm talking about was the first year that the, we had started collecting, so there was still monies owed that had been theoretically collected by the city and the city had not provided to us.
Has the city given that money to us?
I don't work for the district. I'm not entirely sure.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking the question because I want to make, I want, I want people, the public to be, make sure what's going on.
No.
Because if we owe monies.
Correct, I think.
I think February 1st, he just got there and he just released a, a report. The new comptroller just released a report yesterday. And so, and he's also been, um, in communication with.
The new comptroller, the, the new comptroller's, I don't know if this is on, but the new comptroller just, uh, just started in Mount Vernon. And he just gave a report yesterday that came out. Um, in addition, he has been in conversation with Dr. Hamilton in regards to sending over, um, information and dotting their i's and crossing their t's as to what was not sent by the prior, uh, comptroller. So have they just cut the check based on us saying that they, that what they owe? The answer is no. But I am sure because they have come through with conversation first without us asking that, that it should be in the workings.
Thank you.
Okay, she has another part to her presentation?
Part two. Um, okay, so the second part is, uh, really quickly, I wanted to address the pilots. Um, there is, for everyone who doesn't know, there is currently litigation, um, that the school district has filed against the city and the IDA.
Can you explain what a pilot is? Can you say what a pilot is?
Wait, wait, I'm getting there. You're, you're skipping, you're like skipping slides. So, so there's litigation and we wanted to really quickly just kind of go through the basics of what a pilot is, what's affecting it and why the school district is addressing it to begin with.
No, but what does pilot mean is what I'm saying. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I just.
Man, no respect here, no respect. All right, so let's go over the basics real quick, right?
Thank you.
How do we make, how do we get our money? We get our money because properties pay taxes. Those taxes are split between the city, the state, the county, the library, the school district. In Mount Vernon, approximately 63% of your taxes paid goes to the school district and the library. And how do they figure out your taxes? Your property is assessed. They give it an assessed value. It's not market value, to be clear, it's an assessed value. So for every property that comes into the city that they build that doesn't pay their fair share of taxes, taxpayers must bear the burden of the difference. So if, for argument's sake, again, going back to a pizza pie analogy, right? If there are eight slices of pizza and suddenly somebody doesn't pay for one of them, guess what everyone else for the other seven pieces is doing? You're paying some percentage of that eighth slice of pizza, right? So that means who is paying the differential? Homeowners, landlords, and tenants. So what is a pilot agreement? A pilot is payment in lieu of taxes. Hence where pilot comes from. Who are the parties to a pilot agreement? It's the city's IDA and a developer that's looking to build in the community. Short answer is this. This agreement can address anything. It could be all the taxes, part of the taxes, none of the taxes. It can actually be a, something in lieu of taxes. I've heard of company, um, developers coming in and buying fire trucks. So, because again, fire trucks cost money, right? So maybe instead of paying taxes to the city, you buy a fire truck. In theory, that's what a pilot is. So how does it affect the district? The truth is this, a commercial, a retail, or an industrial property has very little impact on the resources and in particular, the school district. However, residential properties are an entirely different situation. These can add a significant number of students to the district without contributing their fair share of taxes to the district. We vehemently oppose giving wealthy, or not so wealthy, I don't want to judge anybody, developers tax exemptions, which are then borne by other taxpayers in the district. So when you're looking at the Mount Vernon IDA, historically, they've mismanaged pilot agreements, which actually resulted in the state comptroller coming in and essentially saying to them, you cannot enter into any more pilot agreements until your IDA is in compliance with the law. They actually determined, they went so far as to say that the comptroller determined that there was a limited assurance that IDA projects actually met their performance goals and actually benefited taxpayers. That was actually stated by the comptroller's office. And within, since that decision came down from the state comptroller, the Mount Vernon IDA actually circumvented the state comptroller's ruling and entered into an arrangement with the Westchester County IDA to approve pilot agreements. So the way that a, uh, IDA is managed is through a UTEP. I know. I can't, I didn't make this up, I swear. So a UTEP is a Uniform Tax Exemption Policy. This is the document that dictates what the IDA can and cannot do. Mount Vernon's UTEP is materially different than most other ID, or UTEPs in the state. Let me say that one more time. Mount Vernon's UTEP is materially different, which means there are things that either they can do or can't do, will or won't do, that are allowed in that IDA that other IDAs do not follow as a general rule. It hasn't been updated in many years. It's running on old assumptions. One of those assumptions for everyone here, the 2020 vision, right? We brought pre-K through eight into the buildings for the elementary and middle. When you're looking at the information for the UTEP, they don't actually use the correct equation. So these, these developers are coming in with the wrong numbers and they're being allowed to because the UTEP is old and outdated. So this yields erroneous enrollment data, which negatively impacts the district financially. There's just not enough money coming in to support the students that are going to potentially be coming in with the building. So when you look at Mount Vernon's UTEP, no one's really sure when the last time it was updated. That's first. Um, it requires developers to make payments based on the number of units in a building. And the IDA actually provides more benefit, generally, sometimes, let me say sometimes. Let me take the word generally out. Sometimes provides benefits which are greater than the exemptions in the UTEP. And the, one of the biggest issues is that the UTEP does not allow the district the opportunity to come in and have a fundamental conversation with developers because they know that we can't stop them. They know that we don't, as of now, have a seat at the table. And it doesn't allow the district to challenge for enrollment. And there is no penalty to developers who exceed their projections. Now, again, we're going to go through projections in a minute. But when you look at a projection, assume that, let's say you have 20 apartments, right? If you project that you have 10 kids of the 20 apartments and you end up having 30 kids in the 20 apartments, there is no penalty to that developer. And then suddenly, when, let's say for argument's sake, we're, we're expecting to have to cover those 10 students, now suddenly we're covering 30 students. And it can be up for up to 30 years. So when we're looking at projections, developers have not historically been held to any particular standard. For example, the Mount Vernon West Project, the developer estimated that in 3,160 units, they would add only 394 students. That equation is one student for every eight units into Williams, which by the way, is already overcrowded. So let's take a step back and look at the history for a real quick sec. These are three different examples of three different buildings that came into Mount Vernon and their equation and how many students they brought in per unit. So if you look at Levester Towers 9th, it's one student per 1.4 units, not anywhere close to one student per eight units. Levester Towers 7th, one student per 1.9 units. 215 Union, one student per 1.6 units. So for argument's sake, just to prove the point really quickly, if we take the most conservative ratio here, which is one student per 1.9 units, Mount Vernon Project, West Project would have 1,663 students instead of 394 students. Instead of the 394 students that they said they were going to potentially bring in. That's a difference of 1,269 children. Effectively, just to quantify that one more time, that's one full high school building or three new elementary and middle school buildings. And for everybody who's capping at home, every middle school slash elementary school building can cost up to at least $20 million to build. So now effectively, if let's say for argument's sake, all these students did come, we don't have anywhere to put them. So we've just signed a $60 million agreement that we're going to now have to build three buildings. By the way, we don't have the land to build the three buildings either, just so we're all on the same page. So effectively, what are we really looking for? What's the district looking for? Number one, we'd like to end the lawsuits. To be forced to sue the city to be heard is a bad place to be in to begin with. The fact of the matter is, we have historically been marginalized by the city and by their representation. So that costs taxpayers money additionally. Every lawsuit that's filed costs taxpayers money. To be clear, though, our attorneys are not charging us for this lawsuit. And when, um, spoken, when, when this was discussed, the city's attorneys would not say the same. So our attorneys, for the record, not charging us. Number one, what do we really want to see? We like to see the UTEP amended to change the exemption structure to be consistent with other IDAs which attempt to tax the properties at near or full value. Number two, for projects where the district is not expected to receive revenue that it normally would, the IDA should require developers to negotiate with the district to provide the district something. It doesn't necessarily mean money. As a city, as a district, as an individual who lives in Mount Vernon, and I've lived here for a long time, we've got to stop giving the house away. We are worthy. There is no reason why people should not pay to come here. There's no reason why people should not give us the same thing they give everybody else. Absolutely not. Request three, UTEP must require pilot agreements to include a mechanism to hold developers accountable for their enrollment projections. Going back to the example again, if we say we have 300, 900, 394 students and you end up having 1,600 students, you should have to pay for that differential. And there has got to be a look back where we can say, as a district, we looked at the last five years and this is how many students you brought in. We cannot be held hostage by sloppy equations and sloppy developers. That's just it. And except in extraordinary circumstances, IDA should adhere to the UTEP and limit all pilot agreements to 10 years. 20 to 30 years is a long time to agree to something. You don't know what the, the finances are going to look like in 10 years. You don't know what the city's going to look like in 10 years. To go 20 to 30 years, that's.
No, really quickly, what do you mean 20 to 30 years? Because you have not been.
So the, the pilots only last a certain amount of years. It's not infinite. So you don't give, you don't say, hey, listen, developer coming in, you're going to build these 3,000 units and you're never going to pay taxes again. That's not, that's not the deal. But the deal could be for a 30, 40-year pilot program. That means 30 years that that, those kids are going to be inheriting those apartments from, you know, their parents or something in 40 years, that could be. So who, who ultimately loses in this deal? The short answer is, we do. More importantly, though, our children do. And the fact of the matter is this, we are constantly being held as a district, and this is not just to Mount Vernon, but all districts. We keep, this thing is turning off. We keep being held to standards where we have to do more and we have to do more with less. And we have charter schools coming in and taking money out of our budget. And we have, huh? It's on, isn't it?
It's cutting out. I think the battery may be dying. You're on a roll.
Thought it didn't like my topic. Hello? It doesn't like me. So again, we're expected to do more. We're expected now social and emotional learning. Now we're worried about keeping the kids safe through COVID. Now we're worried about keeping the kids in the buildings. And now suddenly, again, we have charter schools coming in and taking the money out of our pocket where it's not helping us and it's not helping the students at all. We are the taxpayers in the community and our kids are the ones in the schools. We are the ones that are going to cover any shortfalls. Let's be really clear. It's not, nobody is going to come in. The government's not going to come in. The city is not going to come in. No one's going to come in and say, hey, school district, to come in and say, hey, school district, you guys need more money? Here you go. That's not how it's going to happen. We're going to end up covering not, now not one slice of pizza, but now we're going to be covering three to four slices of pizza. And now we're going to keep getting held to, how come you guys keep raising taxes? Well, we can't help it because ultimately, we still have to educate children. Does anyone have any questions? How did I know there was a hand? Hi, Trustee Mitchell.
All right, so, so first of all, I'm just going to say, thank you so much for putting this together. All right? Because up until, I was like yesterday years old, no, I'm just joking, but for everybody who was like an hour years old ago, they just learned a whole big, big amount, especially when you hear people who come to different city meetings live and they say, well, you know, what the school district has and what we can do or should be able to do. I just want to say thank you very much and kudos to you for putting this together because, both these presentations, because they're amazing. All right? Not just great, but stellar. All right? So I did want to touch on something really quick. You said, do we have any idea how long the IDA was out of compliance?
Well, it's still not in compliance.
It's still not, but how long is, how many, how many years has it been now?
It looks like 1996.
So that, that sounds like 25 years to me. Am I, am I crazy? It's another quarter of a century. All right, that's something. So, so talking about the IDAs, is, can we safely say that the Westchester IDA kind of supersedes the Mount Vernon IDA? So if a developer goes, surpasses our IDA and goes to Westchester IDA, they can give the green light for that developer even if Mount Vernon IDA isn't involved? Is that true? Or do you not know?
I, I don't, I'll be honest, the intricacies of the IDA, I am not aware of, but it would seem that that would be the case considering that is effectively what already happened.
So, okay, and I thank you for that piece. And I think, I would also say it was a good point to state that our attorneys are not charging us to represent us for these matters. But I did want to also mention something about the pilots, 20 to 30 years. You need to understand that it's not just the 30 years that the original developer gets for these tax breaks. They have a son who grows up and starts his own company, right? And then they sell the building to the son who now needs to rental the building, and he goes and he gets an extension on that pilot for another 20 or 30 more years. So the family continues and the company continues to make more money on not giving the school district anything. Anybody can tell you right here, okay? I, I spent many years living in apartments. I have four children. We had four children, we were living in a two-bedroom apartment. Those, that rubric that they're using to say one point, one student to one, that's nonsense. Okay? And they're building up these buildings all along the Fleetwood Line and everything else. Every one of those one-bedroom apartments, apartments are going to turn out at least one kid. And when you're talking about two-bedroom and three, forget it. You can put up to, four kids are coming out of that one apartment. So I think the, you know, our school district parents and the folks who are listening around need to understand that we don't want to just sit here and raise taxes because it's fun. We're not handing out raises and increases and so, we're not doing that type of stuff. We are working, doing and making more with considerably less. And we've been making a magic happen for the past almost 10 years now or more. That's what we've been, that's what we've been trying to do. So I think it's very important that that's it.
I think another really good point to bring up, just for everyone's expectations, is that from what I understand, there are at least 3,000 new units slated to come in. So just again, thinking about 3,000 units, even if you say half of them are one-bedroom and another half of those 3,000 are two and threes, twos and threes, even on the conservative side, think about it, 1,500 units where you assume at least two kids are coming out, that's another 3,000 kids right there.
Correct.
And I have, oh, okay. So what bugs me is that a lot of places, well, places like Mount Vernon and Yonkers and, and New Rochelle, we're fighting the same fight. But East Chester's not fighting this fight. Runcsville's not fighting this fight. All this, you know, moneymaker places, you don't see people in Greenwich, Connecticut fighting, fighting this fight. It's us. So that's something that we need to start thinking about and liable to go on. The other thing is that a lot of these contractors now are looking for ways to sweet talk us and say, hey, we are building elderly affordable houses and, and luxury apartments for the elderly. So there will be no children. How many grandparents right now are parents? Or how many of those elderly parents have to welcome their sons and daughters that have children themselves? And all of a sudden, we have 700 kids that will be going to one of our schools. That is my comment, but I have a question. Who is responsible? Especially here in Mount Vernon? Who is responsible to update the, the, I'm sorry? The UTEP? Yep. And who's responsible, because to fight for us right now, all, like, you know, this is what we're doing, we're fighting, we're educating. But somebody in City Hall has to be responsible to, from all this, somebody in City Hall has to be keeping it quiet. And I want to know who? Because the, the community needs to know. Because the community started knocking doors because I will be knocking doors because I pay $19,000 worth of taxes. And I cannot afford to pay anymore. And elections are coming up. So the community needs to know literally the names of the people that are responsible, the name of the people in City Hall who needs to be fighting for them. Then, because I bet those are the same people that are telling them to come to us and ask us questions, why my kid is not reading right? Why my kid is not being educated? Why my kid is not passing the second grade or whatever? Those are the same people that are sending community members to us. So now we have to turn the tables around and educate and send it back to them. And remind these elected officials, because they're getting paid, we're not, that hello, elections are coming and you being held accountable because I voted for you, now what you're doing for me?
Okay, so any more questions?
I don't, I don't really think that elections and holding elections over people's heads is the answer. I think what the answer is, is finding out on how the policy can get changed that has not been changed, that is antiquated, and so that it doesn't matter who is elected. Because individuals have been elected over and over again with an antiquated UTEP, and they've been going according to the UTEP there. So, you know, threatening individuals that, you know, it's election time, that's not the thing. The thing is sitting down with individuals as one together for coming together to change what the UTEP is saying so that it can meet the goals and the needs of the children, not just five years from now, but 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 25 years from now.
I'd like just to say one thing. First of all, I want to say you were magnificent. Excellent program, I mean, presentation. I would like to see this presentation taken outside of this building and done in certain communities. Because everyone doesn't watch us on TV or Facebook, but I would love to see if we can arrange it, and I think we can, to get this around to at least four corners of the Mount Vernon.
Take it on the road.
Yeah. Take it on the road because this was fantastic.
Thank you. And I think Trustee Turnquist is absolutely right. I think the issue is to focus on getting the UTEP updated, getting the information. That way, it doesn't matter who's sitting in any of these seats, and it doesn't matter who's sitting in any of those seats. Because the fact is, this document will be the, the roadmap to how to get there, and it will be a fair and equitable roadmap.
Well, that's, we need to educate the community as to...
I agree.
No, but it's like, but I understand where you're coming from, and I get it. However, like Trustee Turnquist said, this thing has, this hasn't been updated for how many years? And the same people have been kept on getting elected over and over again? So yes, I bet that if you, like, a lot of these people like these positions. They like the name, they like the, the power, they like the fact that they are elected officials. So the bottom line is, you want to keep us to voting for you, you want to, so guess what? We need this to be done for us. You, we are asking you to please go sit down and do this because it hasn't been done. But how many times have we been voting for the same people that just coming and shake our hands, kiss our babies?
Okay, all right, all right.
So that's what I'm saying, I get it, it's all right. But the bottom line is this, yes, we need to get this updated. But no.
All right, let's move on. So any other questions?
If, if I can, I just want to, just want to kind of piggyback what Trustee Munoz Patterson is saying. We are having conversations with the city relative to updating the UTEP. And, and I think we should anticipate that the new leadership in the city is committed to bringing unity to this topic and putting everyone on the same page. I do think it is important to keep citizens aware, but I do think it's important to point out that the city has, we do see some progress. And hopefully, we'll be able to, to get this reconciled. But I do think it is important to continue to message folks so that they are informed and knowledgeable.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Is there a way that, is, is there a way that that slide could be made into a, a document that is on the webs, on, on our website where they could just slide?
Thank you, thank you.
And slide, you know, because when, when the conversation comes up over and over again?
I think the whole presentation...
If it could just be posted there and just make it keep, and a person could just tap the link and then they could just slide to the next one, slide to the next one? I think that'd be really awesome. Thank you.
But also, I, I love the idea, but also can we, once again, make it?
Broke job.
That everyone can understand it because it's a lot of, you know...
Well, she broke it down.
Yeah, exactly.
She crumbled it.
You know, let's, let's bring it to a point in which everybody that is not knowledgeable of certain jargons that are in the presentation, we be able to understand.
Okay.
And by the way, Madam President, before we move on, if I can, just take a moment to introduce our new...
Oh, yes.
...corporate Kirk. Taylor Emanuel is joining us tonight. We are pleased to have Taylor with us. She is shadowing Jonathan, and he will be more than glad to give this...
So continuing with committee reports, Trustee Miller, do you have a committee report?
Do I? Yeah, I do. Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Patterson, that was great.
It was absolutely fantastic. Need to hire you.
Two things, the Communications Committee met today and we reviewed, we have two, two major initiatives, and we're looking at possibly having to combine the PR initiative for both of them into one big initiative starting late spring. The first is the Parent Resource Center. As Dr. Hamilton mentioned, we did a walkthrough on Friday. It's our second walkthrough in the past three weeks, and it's coming along. We met with Principal Spencer. We're going to be in, in a specific room for a few months, couple of months, and then we're going to be moving to two conjoined rooms, which are right off the ramp from the parking lot. No, in the STEAM. It's, it's going to be in the STEAM High School for now, but in, in the fall, we'll be in two adjacent rooms that are right off the ramp coming from the parking lot. So it'll be the shortest possible distance for parents. It'll also be stroller, wheelchair accessible, et cetera. There's a tremendous amount of work that still needs to be done. We've been working off a punch list, and it's been amazing that people across all different departments of districts have been cooperating in terms of, you know, technology and, and the furniture and our architect Ken Baviello doing the measurements and so on and so forth. He was there today with Jen from the print shop, working on designing signage. So we're moving along, but we have so much that we have to do in terms of really being fully operational that it looks like we're planning for a soft opening, more like a soft opening in April. That's what we, kind of the conclusion we came to today. But we will be opening and providing services then, and we're working on communications, PR documents for the soft opening as we speak with Mike Beeger. On the, on the website, we are, our design is, the initial design is done. We are in the QA process, which is quality assurance. That's what QA stands for in website, not question and answer, but quality assurance. So we test out, so the, the web development team here in the district, as, which I've described before, is a cross-functional team, Gail White Wallace, Sandra O'Connor from the Parent Liaisons, Mike Beeger, myself, Liz Gallo from Technology. We're all going to be testing the various functions, how things work. Content is already being loaded. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, Mike and I will do a presentation of what the new website's going to look like in Mar, in the March 15th board meeting. We're just going to be loading content all the way up until launch and even after launch, because as you know, the website's a dynamic, fluid thing, till the beginning of June and then beyond. Mike and I have a meeting with Dr. Hamilton and Dr. Gorman and Tech and IT and Liz Gallo on Thursday to discuss staffing because this is, this endeavor, if the website is truly going to be the communications hub for our families, our students and our, our parents, we have to have full-time staff against it. It's not a part-time gig, and it's not something, we look at the website now, if you, if you go deep into pages, you'll see content that hasn't been updated in five years. And we can't have that because, you know, you're going to attract people and engage people and have a sticky website and have all the information parents need, you got to be up to date. It's a whole team, and it's a daily basis. Every, every building is going to have its own website. It's all following a template, but every building has its own website, so we're going to have to put in a mechanism in place so that all their information gets updated as well. So it's a big, big process, but we're excited about it. The look is clean and great, and we're going to be testing over the next, I think we have actually three weeks. We finished this, this phase early, so I think we have three weeks now to do Q and A on the site, and then we'll be moving on to locking some elements in. Mike and I have discussed doing two photo shoots in April when the weather gets nicer because a lot of our photography is out of date. Certainly, we haven't had professional photography done a building since the 2020 Vision has been completed, so we have a lot of really great images that we're going to be shooting and utilizing for the website. So that's kind of where we are now, and one other, oh, the, I, the Mount Vernon Education Foundation had a meeting last night, we had a board meeting, and right now, we are in touch with Dr. Gonzalez at the high school because the class of 71 raised several thousand dollars. It wasn't enough to update the Wall of Fame, which was the original, original idea that their class wanted to do, but they've, their fundraising fell way short. So we've reached out to Dr. Gonzalez to ask him if he has a project in his building that these funds could be used for. And we'll go back to the class and see if they want to dedicate their funds to whatever particular need Dr. Gonzalez has for the high school. So...
Class of 71, my report. You said high school, class of 71?
Yeah, because it was their 50th this year, so they were, they were trying to make a big splash and raise a lot of money, but they fell short by a significant amount. You know, it's a tough year to raise money. But there is money there, and we want to make sure it gets utilized by the high school.
Okay. Trustee, Trustee Miller, you spoke about the, the Parent Resource Room?
Center, yep.
So, so in regards to the, during the, our education committee, we spoke about the intentional library for the Parent Resource Room. So I'm getting a list together?
Great.
And Dr. Jeff Gorman and Dr. Conroy, the three of us, we're getting a list together so it'd be intentional for parents to also have resources, you know, like Lucy Corlins' Raising Lifelong Learners, and A Mind at a Time by Dr. Mel Levine, books of that nature.
Well, that's fantastic. And, you know, we're, right now, we're, we're just kind of quantifying all the documents that we want to have available for parents there, so it's perfect timing. You know, we're going to have, like, we're going to, we want to have a page that has all just, this was Dr. White Wallace's suggestion, a page with just QR codes all over it, and just when they come in with their phone, this is where you go for this, this is where you go for that. So we're, the, the whole idea is to be a resource to the parents and help set them up so they can become more independent, more facile with all the, all the district has to offer. That's great, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes your report.
Yep.
Trustee Redd, do you have a report?
I don't have a report, but I just wanted to say, of course, Happy Black History Month to everyone, and to thank the staff, parents, the board, and students for being able to navigate during this pandemic. And it's been rough for a lot of people. I, sidebar, I was really involved with the 17 people that died in that fire in the Bronx. in the Bronx. And they raised a lot of money, so I was very, um, really getting on them about mental health, and I just want, it's a phone number, one eight hundred two seven three eight two five five, for anyone who needs someone to talk to during this time and those sort of things, because it's very difficult for not only the students, but the parents as well. And that's why I just wanna thank everyone out there for your support and dealing with us, and I wanna thank this board as well for making that decision to go fully remote, you know, we caught a lot of flak for that, but when we did that, we did see the numbers go down, so, thank you guys.
Can you repeat the number, please, the number again?
One eight hundred two seven three eight two five five.
Thank you trustee Redd. Trustee White, do you have a report?
I'm sure, um, trustee Miller. I mean, I'm sorry. Trustee Mitchell. Yeah.
Whoa.
Whoa, what a difference. Well, report on some of the buildings he's visited, but I, I wanna speak on behalf of our teachers, they are exhausted.
Yes.
This has been a hard year for them and, you know, I think we have to show some sort of appreciation to them, because this has really been a hard year, this year, last year, and, um, they're working, they're still working, they're still teaching our children, they're, they're breaking their backs, finding ways to get children to come back to school and, and kids that don't wanna come to school, trying to get them back in school, so on behalf of the teachers, I would just like to say, and not just the teachers, I'm sorry, TAs, um, psychologists, social workers, all of them have really worked hard this year and they're exhausted, so, but good luck to them, next year's gonna be a different year.
Trustee White, I just wanna say that, um, um, the wellness committee, we met a cou- probably a couple of weeks back, right? And we, um, we talked about having, uh, health fair for our teachers, a day in which we will discuss, you know, their mental health, in which we will bring community, um, businesses that could offer, you know, deals for them to go to the gym or to, you know, to engage in exercise, yoga, and whatever, just for them, you know, there is another health fair that's gonna happen for the community that we're, we're also talking about in May, but we want, we were talking about doing just one for particularly to thank our teachers and to tell them that we appreciate them and we know they're struggling and we are very grateful for all the work that they have done.
Yeah, they have. So is that, is that it for you trustee White?
Yes, sir, it's.
Uh, trustee Miller? Trustee Mitchell.
What's going on today?
Thank you for starting and I thank you for keeping it live, all right.
I wanted to know if you wanna wait over there.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, uh, really quick, um, we missed, I missed a couple of trustees, I miss Dr. Neng right now, someone shout his name out really quick, I miss Dr. Neng. Um, we always good, I got a good, uh, report out of him, no matter how long he, he, it was, it was always good. Um, I'm gonna just really quick, before I really get into the, to the building visits that I made over the past week or so, I'm just wanna talk, I'm gonna piggyback off of trustee Sorensen, because I actually have the minutes from that last health and wellness meeting that we had, um, so, yeah, don't, don't, don't look at it, sorry. See my, see my name in there, okay, so, um. No, okay, good, all right, so, so we had our health and wellness meeting and I'm sorry, this is a late, uh, speak on it, because it happened in December, um, but I didn't get to share some of the things we discussed, so, um, we discussed food pantries in the district, which, uh, at the time, um, uh, we, we were involved, Mr. Policio was handling that, but we were talking about certain things like, um, our health and, uh, we were planning a health and wellness fair, um, and we had our, and a health and wellness committee who, trustee Sorensen, you chaired that committee, do you?
No.
Okay, 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 so, we're supposed, part of what was supposed to be, what we're supposed to offer was gonna be blood pressure screenings, diabetes screenings, therapeutic massages, meditation, yoga, dietitian, nutritionist, physical and emotional wellness, and, you know, in the vein of shouting people out who have been, who have really worked hard, um, I'm, I'm definitely shouting out teachers and TAs and all that, and I'm gonna also say, um, our food service workers and our security guards, all right, let's just, let's just never, let's just not forget, our security guards are undermanned, they're undermanned, the buildings are undermanned, okay, these are K through eight buildings, they can't be all gauged the same, um, some of our K through eight buildings are pretty docile, are pretty cool, it's not a problem, some of our K through eight buildings are almost Mount Vernon High School level challenging as far as keeping kids behaviorally in, in order and for them to manage the building, so, I know I have mentioned, uh, the need that we need to revisit how we man our buildings with security guards, but it has to happen like right, right now, um, because the more that we spend during this, dealing with this pandemic and taking time out of school, taking children out of the, the buildings and the social, um, the damage and deterioration of the social aspect of it, um, they're coming back in the building with this, a whole different type of mindset that is totally something we've never seen before at the level that it's at, I mean, we've all seen, you know, you know what goes on in the school, you know, you know, the fights and the, the rowdy and unruly happens, but we're just seeing a whole different color of it now, it's really outlandish, so, um, I'm just shouting out security guards really quick and saying that, um, we will be having discussions, I know I'm gonna talk to Ms. Teigs and ask her some questions tomorrow or something, so she can, uh, to answer some stuff for me, but, um, we talked about, uh, nutrition as far as vegan and vegetarian info, being able to provide that type of stuff. Um, at the time trustee Sorensen already reached out to the community after discussing with Dr. Hamilton, um, so we were discussing things like Pilates on video, yoga classes on video, um, that we just needed to get some dates, um, we also discussed, I'm sorry, bear with me, so, we're aligning with our community school initiative, if, you know, we mentioned in the community school, uh, initiative is still underway, we're still trying to, uh, have our community school, Dr. Hamilton, how do we look on timing, do we have a timing as far as our community school getting, uh, launched?
We are on target for September twenty twenty-two.
Okay, September twenty twenty-two, uh, we'll be, uh, part, part of what that community school is, uh, one of the things we're gonna have, we're gonna have wellness day events there is the plan as well, um, that was something we discussed, uh, at that, at that meeting. Um, we discussed some things, uh, with our foods, our food company, uh, service, contracted food company, Witson, some things we were needing from them, um, I've been paying attention to what my parents are telling, what our parents are telling us about, uh, the breakfast and the hot breakfast and things not being consistent by building and, and, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna segue into broken equipment and things like that and what I've seen in my, uh, last week of vi- visits, uh, I, uh, Ms. Amy Mizelli was on the call, very helpful, we were just, basically she gave me a lot of, uh, uh, understanding as to what the agenda has been and I was able to communicate what my concerns are, have been, still are, and concerns that are on the way. Communicating to our children, the menus, like I just, uh, we just recently checked the site and in light of what trustee Miller was saying about how we've got information that's over five years old on the site, we also have data that's supposed to be updated on a regular basis just for last week that's not up there.
We don't have any way to do it.
Yeah, right, and I understand it, so it's a lack of manpower again, so just like with security being undermanned, we have lack of manpower to keep the site updated as well, so it's a lot of heavy lifting going on and not enough people lifting, able to lift.
And if I, if I can just jump in on that trustee, if I may, uh, trustee Miller, um, as we explore and I'll, we'll talk about that in our meeting on, on Thursday, um, we need to really make sure we have a clear protocol, because in the past trustees have asked for information to stay up there and what happens is it gets cluttered and you can't navigate it, uh, so we have a pro- a protocol in place for how long information gets up, when it should come down, and maybe even a policy quite frankly.
Well, we're, yeah, I'm working with Mike Beeger on creating exactly that.
Good.
And, and he's also discussing that with Dr. Waterman, 'cause she's the first school site that, that we're working on, just developing Williams.
Okay.
Site, and it's basically, you know, when you put, when you want something in, you have to say, this one is, this is when we want it to go live and this is when it comes down, and we have to approve when it comes down, it will come down.
Good.
And be replaced by the next great thing.
Gotcha.
Because we know we got a lot of great things happening.
Right. You just reminded me to mention.
Thank you, no, not a problem, um, I wanna mention a topic, right, one last thing before I go into the visits that I had, um, we recently have heard from parents who came to board edu- board meetings, uh, the last time I heard somebody say something live was when we were at homeschool, um, a PTSA for our special education children. Now, my understanding is, I don't see why this works differently than any other PTA, you have parents who are willing to volunteer their time, you ha- and if you're lucky enough, you'll have, uh, staff and building people who also will wanna serve on this PTSA, I, i- is it something special that has to be done to put this PTSA together?
Sorensen's gonna speak on that, okay?
Okay, goodie, oh, so, see, see?
You're going, you're going into another, you know, just stay in your lane.
I'm just, listen, I'm, I'm gonna let you know right now, I have no lane and I don't signal, so, look at, so if, if trustee Sorensen, if you're going to speak on it, you have a couple of minutes to get yourself together. Anyhow, um, I just wanted to make it known that it's on my mind, it's on my radar, and if it's on mine, I'm trying to make sure all of us is on all our radar, the importance of having a PTSA for our spec ed kids, um, our students, I'm sorry, 'cause kids are goats, um, our spec ed students, all right, um, and I want it known to any of our parents and I, I, I'll be honest and I'll say this, I've seen the turnouts for most of the special education presentations live and they were horrifying, but the last presentation, which was Zoom, right trustee Sorensen? Was amazing, right, we had over a hundred families represented, okay, so, if we can do that, I know PTA meetings on Zoom for the past year now have been successful as far as having people on, I think it'd be great if we have those parents, these parents, those parents who want to start a PTSA for spec ed, please, all you have to do, if I'm not mistaken, is go into your building and ask your principal how you can get it started and take it from there, get a group of parents that are willing to volunteer their time and you can make it happen, unless I'm mistaken here, that's it, right?
Sorensen take care of that.
Okay, so trustee Sorensen's gonna tell us the rest on that, so moving on to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and rap fast. I visited, I'm gonna do it right now, I'm gonna try and shut up, so, I visited Parker School and Rebecca Turner, formerly Longfellow, uh, just this past week, so, I visited Longfellow because, um, well, uh, uh, because the BCS survey, BCS report and the, uh, priority report came out, um, at our last, uh, board meeting and it basically was a very good tool for a, a roadmap of sorts for what we have to handle immediately, what the money's gonna be used for, intended at this point, and how we're going to use it across our building, so, visiting these two buildings, what I did was I went to the buildings, because everything is not about the pretty, and a lot of times we do a lot of presentations and everything looks pretty and it's shiny, and it's not always that, because instead of, sometimes it's pretty and sometimes it's poo, so, I went to the buildings where, and I asked to see the poo, so, in certain situations, it was leaky ceilings, it was, um, of course, peeling paint and all kinds of other things that our children are looking at every single day and our staff members are sitting in it, teachers sitting in a class that's barely sixty degrees, because the seals around the windows are still underway, they have to be updated and things like that, so, um, big shouts to, uh, Dr. Doggett again and his, um, his head custodian, uh, uh, JR, who walked with us through the buildings, uh, big shouts to, uh, Ms. Green, uh, is Dr. Green at Parker?
Yes, not yet, not yet.
I'm sorry, almost Dr. Green, Ms. Green, uh, over at Parker and her head custodian who walked with me through the buildings along with Ken Silver and Ken Bavioelo, thank you in the back, Mr. Ken Bavioelo, for, uh, being at, on-site at both occasions, um, looking at the things, yes, that we've been talking about and looking at for the past years, but what I did during these visits was, we saw the issues in the builders and then we tied it out to what we saw in the BCS survey, which had the targets for priorities, so that way it could say, okay, you know what, it's here, I see it with my eyes, but is it on this paperwork that we're supposed to be using as our roadmap, so we were able to successfully tie a lot of, almost, we actually, I'm sorry, everything that we saw, we were able to tie out, so we did have people on the lower level at Rebecca Turner who were cold because they had inconsistent heating from one end of the floorboard, heating board, to the other, and we discussed what the factors might have been, and, uh, we just got an update today from Ken Bavioelo on all the buildings that we discussed and his movements on how we're gonna get things done, as far as, some of it is gonna be very nice, very strong-looking Band-Aids until we get to the point that we can actually do full-fledged repair and, uh, replacement on rooftops and things like that, um, again, we're looking at over a quarter century of straight neglect on our south side buildings, so, you gotta expect that this is what you're seeing on a regular basis, this is what we're hearing about, so, um, Parker School, there's been a lot of, uh, update, a lot of change in there as far as, um, cleaning the ceilings where the air ducts are, things like that, um, storage is a facility in all our buildings, so a lot of times you gonna see, you're gonna walk through your halls and you're gonna see things in this, in the hallways, they're like, they're stacked up and it's like, why they're there, when I come in the building, I'm asking the same question, but just know that storage is a problem in all our buildings, uh, and they're trying their best to manage as best they can, um, but it still doesn't mean it's not a hot topic, 'cause we have to make sure we have, uh, safety for the kids, for our students and staff as well. STEAM had a heat issue as well, but as we found that it's a Honeywell issue, which is the vendor who handles the thermostats and some more stuff like that, uh, but from my understanding, it's, uh, under control, uh, but that was for the most part, those are the first two buildings that I came to see, uh, and I'll be visiting more over the next week or so, and again tying things out to the BCS and trying to get fixes on things that are immediate, so that we can sustain and have some sort of comfortability until we get to the point that we can start talking renovations, and that's all I have.
Thank you trustee Mitchell, so trustee Mitchell, I'd like to have you chair the BCS committee, okay, so, uh, we wanna start with the Williams and Parker, priority one and twos, and I also want you to, um.
What is the acronym?
Building Condition Survey.
Yeah, so I want you to, um, gather some people from the community and, um, and concentrate on that, also like, I, I, I did get a copy of the building condition survey and I wanna get the, the numbers broken down, I say, for instance, they say a roof of course, a million dollars, um, so I wanna get the labor intense and whatever, I wanna get the breakdown of how they come about some dollar amounts, okay? So whenever you get that chance.
Yep, so I, you all heard it first right here, uh, trustee, uh, President Sorensen said, I need to grab some people from the public who wanna be a part of this BCS committee and I, I need, I need the muscle, I need the muscle.
Okay, all right, uh, so trustee Sorensen, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, yes, I do. One, I'm sorry? What? No, 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 don't, no, I will, I will be stalking, um, so first of all, happy Chinese New Year and happy, you know, Black History Month and it shouldn't be a month, I agree with all of you, it shouldn't be a month, it should be a year-round celebration, um, first of all, and second of all, I would like to send a huge shout-out to our swim team, girls and boys, they did phenomenal this season, and the boys had their last meet last Tuesday, um, Dr. Hamilton was there, we were able to, um, put it on Facebook Live and it's incredible how they grown in just, you know, in such a short period of time, so, I, I, I just wanna put out there that I would love for all of us to, I don't like calling it adopting, but to adopt a team, because we have, it's not, we are not only a basketball and, and, and football or track, you know, um, district, we have soccer team, we have tennis team, we have the swim team, we have, and it would be so lovely if we could, all of us adopt a team and we could attend to as many games or meets as we can and just bring the report back and just tell everybody how well our kids are doing, 'cause we need to recognize the fact that they're doing phenomenal. On, with that being said, so, the, um, the special committee met and we, um, we were, we discussed the Educational Advisory Council, Ca- Council's calendar for the rest of the year, and we came up with all the topics that we wanted to cover till May.
Can you, can you, I'm, I'm sorry, but can you explain that the Special Education Advisory Council is?
No, that's where I was gonna go to.
Special Education Advisory Council is special ed PTA and it covers the whole district, not just schools, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, that's where I was gonna go into it.
All right.
And, like President Sanders said, it is not, it's, it's, it is a. And, like President Sanders said, it is not, it's, it's, it is a district-wide committee. It is not individual schools committee, it's a district-wide committee. And we already have one parent, and that is Ms., um, Clooney, Clooney, that's, am I saying it right? Ms. Clo- Clooney? Clowney. Um, and we are asking parents to come and join us. The same way that, you know, Trustee Mitchell asked for manpower, we're asking for manpower to come and join us as well. Um, our next, um, program will be on February sixteenth, from six to seven-thirty, and the information is already up in the website, right? And we will be discussing parents' rights. You know, as it comes to IEPs, as it comes, as just to being, being a special ed parent, your kids, you know, you do have rights, your children have rights, and we wanna discuss them, we wanna make sure that you guys are all well-versed. That way you could be able to advocate for yourself and, most importantly, to advocate for your children. Um, we decided that these, um, wonderful programs will take place the second Wednesday of every month till May. Um, we will be also introducing all the topics on, on February that we're gonna have till May. And they're gonna be all up on the website with, um, the Zoom link. They all, they, they will be, they will all be conducted, uh, in Zoom. Um, what else, what else, what else? And basically, that's it. You know, we just want people to come and join us, and parents to come and participate because without you, we cannot do this right. We need to know what you need, that way we could meet your needs. So, thank you very much.
But before, um, Rachel DePaul left, she was trying to start a, uh, after-school program for special ed.
I forgot about that, thank you.
With short teachers, did we get any more teachers that wants to sign up? Also, um, a year, a few years ago, we started the Pioneer League with, um, special ed kids to do sports after school. Have we made any movement on that? Do you know? Do you know, Dr. Gorman?
I do know that, um, they have the Special Olympics.
Yeah, the Special Olympics, the Pioneer League. So, do, you know, and do we have any children that wanna participate in that?
Typically, we do. I, I'll speak to them.
Yes, students are very interested in participating in the Special Olympics. Um, we have Rocky Alanello, he's the person that's in charge. Um, I'll have to speak to him about greater details and dates for that.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
Um, and the other thing with, um, with the Rachel, before Rachel, um, left. And that's, and I just wanna put it out there to the parents, because, you know, like everybody knows, I am a parent of a special needs child. And I know that you guys want, you know, parents right now are looking for help. And we just want you all to understand that we are working on it. Everybody here in the district is working on it, and teachers are not applying, you know, and we think it's due to COVID. You know, we think that it's due, you know, not, they don't wanna be in person. But we are working on it. We have not forgotten about you guys, we have not forgotten about our kids. We are working really hard to make this after-school happen for our children.
Okay, thank you. So I have a couple of questions. So, Dr. Hamilton, um, are we gonna have the reading challenge again this year?
That'll be awesome.
We've been talking about, um, doing that, as you know, COVID kinda put a kibosh on it. Uh, so, I know students have been asking me about it. Uh, I'm gonna be speaking with Dr. Gail White Wallace, who, as you know, is our special events, our special projects, um, leader. And I think we can still pull it off. Uh, we will have to think about, um, what the parameters are relative to what the criteria will be, which is, is minor frankly, but I think we can pull it off. I'll be able to give you more information after we meet, um, we're actually meeting next week, and I'll be able to let you know more then.
And, uh, Trustee Mitchell, I got that right, right? Any updates on the name changes for Holmes and Conroy?
I was just about to ask Dr. Hamilton on a sidebar, if I'm not mistaken, we need to get a resolution on for that, right?
I think, um, uh, Trustee McCowen asked to have, uh, I guess, do we have to just pick a policy or something like that?
Yeah, we did, right? Review the policy, there's a name already selected?
Yeah, two, both, for both schools, yeah.
Alright, so, as long as it's consistent with the policy, it's just a matter of putting a, um, resolution before the board.
So do you need me to send an email?
Yes, sir.
You sure now, so, alright, alright.
Just to eat, uh, uh, just say what the name of the school will be.
Not a little wordy, that means.
How's the dissertation, alright?
Uh, there any more, any more questions or anything?
Before, before we end, um, everyone that's listening in cyberspace, all parents, um, please make sure that your child is reading twenty to thirty minutes every night and every day, even on the weekends. We have about thirty-six days until the, no. Thirty, I think it's thirty-six days, maybe, maybe not, I might be a little off, until the New York State exam in our elementary schools, that is going to be conducted in April. And the, the issue is that the, the ability to be able to sit down and to read for a long period of time is what the problem is. And so you could start off small and short, you could do it like ten minutes, and then you build it up to eleven minutes. And then after a while, twenty minutes will go by so fast. If your child is having a reading problem, then they need to also be able to listen to the book that they are reading, and they could read along with the book. There's an app called S O R A, S O R A, the books are for free. The books will read to your child, um, it's in coalition with the library.
The Mount Vernon Library?
Uh, no. But, I'm sure that Mount Vernon Library also has an app. So, just make sure that your child is reading every single day. In the same time, in the meantime, between time, if you're reading aloud to your child every day, that also makes a major difference. Because it's different with you reading aloud to your child than you just talking to your child. Because read alouds have a plethora of vocabulary in there that our children are exposed to. And so once again, the New York State exam is coming up in April. And even if your child is not taking a New York State exam, you should treat them as if they are. And they have to be able to have that stamina to sit down and, and for a long period of time and read and answer questions. It's not that they don't know how to read, it's the ability to be able to sit down for a long period of time. And if you have a child who have a problem with sitting down for a long period of time, you need to make sure that you contact the individuals in your school and make sure that you get them, uh, special, um, accommodations because they also give breaks to children who have a problem with sitting down for a long time. Thank you. Twenty to thirty minutes a night.
I have one more thing. Um, we received an email from, um, what's her name? Shanice Jones, she's the PTA president. And she's requesting or asking for help to get some seated cushions at Benjamin Turner Middle School to use in the library for, these are for special ed kids. So if, uh, and they're seventy-nine dollars apiece, so she's asking if we can, anybody can give donations, uh, to, to PTA.
This is a teacher requesting materials.
Yeah, the PTA president, uh, Ben, uh, she's the PTA president, and she specifically said for Benjamin Turner. The heated, uh, their cushion crates, she sent a picture of it to myself, Darcy, and.
I got it, I got it too.
You got it too, yeah.
Well, I didn't get it.
I've never seen them before.
Um, so I, if somebody could forward that to me, um, and then we can see if that's something that we can support.
She said they want like six or nine of them or something like that. Okay, so moving on to our, um, resolutions. That's it, everybody, any, anybody have any other questions, comments? Jonathan, you wanna go with, uh, four-one?
Surely. May I have a motion, oh, may I have a motion to approve Human Resources Memorandum fifty-two A certified and fifty-two B non-certified?
Motion. Fifty, no, we're, uh, four-point-one, aren't we?
No, four-point-one, yeah.
Four-point-one.
That's four-point-one.
Four-point-one is fifty-two A.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right.
Second.
No, I didn't, am I, am I in the wrong to, uh, yeah, I have, uh, five-one. Oh, he said fifty-two A, I thought he was talking about you.
Yeah, he said about you.
Okay, gotcha. Sorry about that.
Okay, um, questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The eyes have it, the motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Human Resources Tab four-point-two authorization to pay staff for pre-kindergarten screening?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The eyes have it, the motion carries. May I have a motion to approve, may I have a motion to approve School Improvement, School Improvement Service Memorandum S twenty-two dash thirteen, dated February first, two thousand and twenty-two?
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The eyes have it, the motion carries. May I have a motion to approve School Improvement Service Memorandum S twenty-two dash fourteen, dated February first, two thousand and twenty-two?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns?
I have a question. Um, the Educate LLC, can we get a quick explanation of what they're doing?
Sure. Um, Dr. B.C.?
Sure, sure. Um, Educate LLC will be doing three things. Part one, they are going to do all the training for the CEL, which is social emotional learning in, in the district for all stakeholders, which include parents, which includes staff, and teachers as well. The other part of it is that they are going to work with the parent liaisons and also other parents from the community as to come up with a commu- a great communication plan for the district because the superintendent has challenged us or tasked us with that. We should come up with a great communication plan that we can reach the district, you know, in every asset of the district. And the third part is that they're gonna be doing some coaching for new teachers as well as new administrators. Because, um, when we met with the new teachers and we met with the new administrators, they require a whole lot of things that they think that we have to give them like one-on-one, right on the fly, as soon as they are hired. So they'll be doing a lot of coaching in person as well. So those are the three things that, um, Educate LLC will be doing.
Thank you so much. And how much is this anticipated? I didn't see a dollar amount.
Well, okay, so that's going to be more or less negotiated to a point because the state has already approved them for, what, like ninety thousand dollars? But we won't give them ninety thousand dollars until we are sure of how much work they can do in the given time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, there is a motion. Does that conclude all the questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The eyes have it, the motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve School Improvement Personnel Memorandum P twenty-two dash ten, dated February first, two thousand and twenty-two?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns?
I have a question. Uh, Dr. Bennett Conroy, for the, uh, the Academic Power Hour, does that end in May, or is that ending in June?
Well, it, well, it depends. We, sometimes it's May, sometimes it's June. And it depends on the school, because if the kids miss a lot of time, I need makeup time, we go in June. You know, but if they get, they're full-time, they go in May. So it all depends on how the kids, you know, I mean, need.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The eyes have it, the motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve Business Office Memorandum number eighty-one, dated February first, two thousand and twenty-two?
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns?
I have a question on the, um, the, the, um, item number three. Can you hear me? For item number three, that's the, um, electrical bid? So where the, so this is a new bid for, for, um, services?
Uh, Mrs. Moselli?
Yes, it is. If the board will recall, um, a few months ago, we were tasked with going out to bid to include DEI language. A number of bids were put out, and the electrical contractor had modified the response in, modified the bid. So it was, uh, not a valid response. We went back out to bid, and this is the, um, lowest responsible bidder.
And this is, the, well, haven't we used this same company before?
Yes.
In the past?
Yes, we have.
So we don't have, we don't know what the other bidders were?
I'm not sure who the other bidders were, uh, but based on our procurement policy, um, we, when we go out to bid, we have to, uh, award the bid to the lowest responsible bidder. And in this case, the bid document was amended to include the DEI language per the board's direction, and this was the lowest responsible bidder.
And the DEI language, is it in this, in this, uh, resolution?
The DEI language is embedded in the bid documents, which serve as the contract specs.
So it's not in this resolution though, right?
Well, the resolution refers to the bid, and the bid itself has the DEI language embedded in it. It's the same resolution that we used, uh, to award the contract to the three other contractors that also have DEI language in their contract.
Okay.
Any additional questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The eyes have it, the motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the settlement tax proceedings for WBT, Mount Vernon Realty Incorporated?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The eyes have it, the motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Student Services Memorandum number thirteen, dated February first, two thousand and twenty-two?
Motion. Second.
Questions, comments, concerns?
I have a question. Uh, Dr. Hamilton?
Yes, Smith.
Uh, how are the students, remember when we had our, um, our trustee meeting in the school? In, in Holmes?
Yes.
And there was a parent that, uh, that stated that they were worried about the, the makeup-related services that their child received. How are those parents notified in regards to the makeup services?
Uh, Dr. Smith has actually, as you know, assumed responsibilities in that department. And she has generated a report for me that outlines, uh, outstanding, uh, services that need to be made up. Um, and we are assigning those, those tasks, and those parents are being made, uh, notified accordingly uh, when those services will be made up and what that schedule will be. And that's, that's happening by, uh, the, through the special ed team.
Okay, so that's just for everyone that's listening, just note that if your child or you know somebody related who receives special services and their services were interrupted during COVID, that there are services that are going to be made up. Is it like, uh, morning and after-school?
Actually, it's gonna be morning after-school, and we may even have to.
During lunch?
On there.
And, okay.
To try to get some of the services made up.
So it'd be morning, after-school, and maybe in, in weekends and things of that nature. So please look out for that notification, and just, you know, the, the district wanna make sure that your child gets that makeup services.
And that's in addition to the services that they already get.
Yes.
Ordinarily be offered, yes.
I, I have a question also on this, uh, resolution. Are these, uh, the, the new, we discussed, uh, the new psychologists and social workers, are those incremental? Are we in, fully staffed in those positions to begin with, and these are incremental to those?
Yes.
So, so we have all our psychologists and our social workers in place presently?
I think we're short a social worker, correct? A psycholo- we're short one psychologist, but this is in addition to the existing team.
Okay, the existing, existing complement.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The eyes have it, the motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve Superintendent's Resolution, dated February first? Can I have a motion to approve Superintendent's Resolution, dated February 1st, 2022?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns?
I have a question. It's still related to safety. I don't know if I could ask it regular, just random. The last meeting, I know we had discussed getting as close to accurate percentages on COVID testing. I know it's not exactly the resolution, but I wanted to make sure, are we still moving toward getting those, that data?
On the number of folks who were tested?
Who were tested, yes.
Yes. Dr. Gorman is working on getting that, that number. We had another batch go out, actually go out tomorrow.
Okay. So, so what is there?
We are, right now, we are doing non-vaccinated folks. And then what's our target for the random?
Yeah, so we're going to do non-vaccinated. We've been doing non-vaccinated staff, right? So that's the mandate. So if you're vaccinated, you're fine. But if you're non-vaccinated, you have to show proof of a weekly negative COVID test, either through us or on your own. We also sent Rapid Kit out to each of the schools so they could use test-to-stay protocols. Which means if I have COVID, Dr. Smith does not, but she's a close contact, she could still attend school if she brings back a negative test every day for five days. The next phase is to do random testing of at least 20% of our population, staff and student. And we'll be doing that with the PCR saliva tests again as soon as we get back from spring break, from winter break, which is the end of February.
And that's part of the test-to-stay protocol?
No, the test-to-stay is exactly what I described.
Okay, all right. And when will the data regarding percentages be available?
Well, we could, I know I gave you a breakdown of staff and students that tested positive in each school.
And that'll be made public to parents as well?
I think all of that is...
We can't. I don't, we haven't, but we can.
Okay.
It's a while ago anyway, so we definitely can.
Sure.
So I'm just sorry, really quickly, just to kind of leap off what you were talking about. So we know the staff that are vaccinated. Do we know how many students are vaccinated? Is there any tracking mechanism?
We actually do have that information. It's still, we started collecting that information. Because there are still students in the process. It's actually a fluid number, it's literally changing every week. And that's, we're doing vaccination clinics through the district, the partnership with the city. We have a partnership with Mount Sinai, a partnership with Mount Eiffel, and a partnership with Neighborhood. The Health Center. So we have three entities working to try to get as many of our students vaccinated as possible for those who choose to do it. So we, but we do have those numbers. Nurses have those numbers.
May I ask how they're getting them? Because I know no one asked me for my children's vaccination status.
I'm not sure how the nurses are gathering them. Because we're just getting them right from the nurses. I'm not sure what their protocol is.
I do believe it's through the DOH. Because we have not, we can't, we have not asked all of our students if they're vaccinated or not.
So is there any way that I can be pro, like, parents who already have, just so I don't have to get this later, can I just send my card in or my kids' cards in so that way they have?
Dr. BC also has information on how, I think, the Neighborhood Health Center is collecting that information?
We're collecting from the Neighborhood Health Center, the County, and also Mount Eiffel as well. So we are collecting from three different sources.
But I think trustee's question is, how do we, how do we get it out that we want that information collected from parents?
Yeah, because you wouldn't capture my children, because my children didn't go to any of those entities.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that we're capturing from everyone. If we're, if people want to self-report, they have a mechanism to self-report.
We will put that together. That's, we can do that with the, we haven't been mandated to do that. That's the point. So we'll put a process in place. And by the way, our testing protocol exceeds what the state requires, by the way. We have gone above and beyond the minimal standards that the state requires. And I think we have made tremendous effort with reducing our numbers through this process. So it's working, and we'll continue to gnaw away at that until we get all of our folks vaccinated and folks are safe.
Any additional questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The eyes have it, the motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve, I'm sorry, can I have a motion to accept the minutes from the January 18th, 2022 board meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The eyes have it, the motion carries.
So we're going to, a motion to go into an executive session for the purpose of?
For the purposes of discussing legal advice, negotiations, and the employment history of a particular person or persons.
Revised. Gus is not here tonight, so we're not getting legal advice, just negotiations in person or persons.
Enter into executive session for the purposes of discussing negotiations and the employment history of a particular person or persons.
So there's no action after that, so we're going to adjourn the meeting tonight.
We need a motion for exec.
Motion. Motion for exec. Motion for exec, I'm sorry.
Can I have a, can I have a motion? You were the first?
A motion.
Okay. Questions, comments, concerns?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The eyes have it, the motion carries.
If I have concerns, can I go home?
No, you did a good meeting, so you're good. Everyone have a good night. Get home safe, please.